I hereby call to order the Roseville City Council meeting from Monday, October 21st, 2024. Mr. City Manager, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Strong.
Here.
Councilmember Ratten.
Here.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Here.
Councilmember Graff.
Here.
Mayor Rowe.
Here. And with us at the dais, we have our city attorney, Rachel Tierney, who is back from vacation and is ready to go on this heavily legal subject matter evening. And then we also have City Manager Pat Trudgen on my left at the other end of the dais, and we'll introduce other staff and department heads and guests as various agenda items come forward. I would remind folks, if you've got a cell phone, to silence it or otherwise assure that it doesn't disrupt the meeting this evening. There is a copy of the meeting materials on the back table underneath the big clock by the back door if anyone from the public needs to access the various meeting materials. It is a single copy for everyone to share, but we do have extra copies of the agenda itself if folks need that for reference as well. And with that, we'll ask folks to stand, if you're able, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next on our agenda is approval of tonight's agenda, and I'll check, as always, with Mr. Trudgen, are there any changes from a staff perspective?
Mr. Mayor, there's no changes to the agenda tonight.
All right. I'll check with the council then. Anyone on the council see a change that needs to be made or an item that council members might like removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration this evening? All right. And just a quick check, we do have a few items on our consent agenda this evening, which is Section 10, Items A through E. These items are normally taken as a single motion towards the end of the meeting, but if anybody is here for one of those items this evening wishes to speak or ask a question, this would be the time to let us know, and we can move that item earlier into the meeting agenda so that you don't have to stay to the very end. Is there anyone from the public who's here on an item in Section 10 of our agenda this evening, the consent agenda? Does not appear to be the case. With that, then, a motion to approve the agenda as presented would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Strong, seconded by Councilmember Ratten, to approve tonight's agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We have our agenda for this evening. Next is our first opportunity for public comment. We will have a chance, in most cases, for public comment on agenda items as they come up, but we do also want to provide at the start of each meeting an opportunity for general public comment. This would be for items that are not on tonight's agenda but may be related to city business or of interest to people in the community. So we'll check at this time. Is there anyone here to speak on the general public comment on non-agenda items this evening? Does not appear to be the case. All right. Then we will move on with our agenda. The first item after public comment is recognitions and donations, and we have one proclamation this evening. I'll read the proclamation, and then a motion to approve would be in order from the council. This is a proclamation related to Native American Heritage Month, and it reads as follows: Whereas the city of Roseville is located on land obtained through a broken treaty that was first home to Dakota and Ojibwa people, and where many of those folks continue to reside, and whereas the city of Roseville recognizes that this treaty entitled non-native people to live and work on traditional native lands, and whereas despite centuries-long and ongoing erasure of indigenous people from American history and unjust federal policies of assimilation and termination that ripped children from their families, Native American people have persevered, and whereas the indigenous people of this land, upon which our country and city now stand, have provided values and ideas and have become ingrained, that have become ingrained in American culture, including respect for the natural environment and a rich cultural history, and whereas the city of Roseville is committed to promoting equity and inclusion, equality and justice as fundamental aspects of a safe and welcoming community, and to undo the longstanding trauma and harm of unjust government practices and policies of assimilation and termination that have cost countless lives and displaced and broken up families, and whereas the city of Roseville invites all members of the community to join the federal government in celebrating and acknowledging the 2024 National Native American Heritage Month, and whereas this observance offers increased opportunity to better understand Native American heritage, past and present contributions to our communities, and to honor the many indigenous people who have sacrificed their lives and customs for the growth of our nation, now therefore be it resolved, the city of Roseville hereby proclaims the month of November as Native American Heritage Month in the city.
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's moved by Councilmember Strong, seconded by Councilmember Graff. Any discussion on that motion to approve that proclamation? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, and that proclamation is approved. That then brings us to our business items this evening. We have three business items. The first is for our consideration this evening. After having seen this item on prior occasions, this is looking to potentially adopt our Green to Go ordinance, and we have Noel Bachan, our sustainability specialist this evening with us. I'm working on these titles to help with the council getting back up to speed on this particular ordinance and where we are at this evening. Ms. Bach.
Thank you, Mayor Rowe, councilmembers. So we have discussed this quite a bit over the last couple of years. I'm hoping to keep this presentation relatively short so we can move on through discussion, but we're already 10 minutes ahead of time, so we're already looking good.
You don't have to. That's okay.
I'll do a quick review of the history of this discussion at the city, why we're looking at implementing an ordinance like this, talk through some of the goals that we're going to set forth should this get passed, and then talk through an implementation and enforcement timeline recommendations, and then move on to questions and discussion from there. So since I've been here, I have been discussing this with our Public Works Commission and with city council since 2022. I know there have been a few more informal conversations prior to that, so the city's been considering this for quite a while. Between March 2022 and August 2023, I presented three times to the Public Works and Environment and Transportation Commission. They made a recommendation to council to consider this ordinance, and I came back to council on January 23, '24 of this year to talk about an engagement process, which council approved. We spent four to five months doing community engagement with both residents and businesses in the city. We had two surveys, one for businesses, one for residents. We did multiple mailings to businesses, held two community meetings, and also did quite a bit of in-person outreach as well in the summer. And then we brought back that discussion about that engagement process in August. The reason why we're looking at this, we're primarily looking to reduce the use of styrofoam in food service use, as well as any non-recyclable plastics. There are multiple state plans now that are also in line with this, including the Pollution Control Agency's Solid Waste Management Plan, which is putting forth the goal of us reaching a 75% recycling rate by 2030, which is a short six years away, as well as the recently passed Packaging Cost and Waste Reduction Act, which will require all packaging in Minnesota to be recyclable or compostable by 2032. Additionally, we know that recycling markets continue to change and shift, and some things, especially things like black plastic, that we see a lot of food takeout containers, is not currently accepted by our recycling haulers, and not even plastic number five is actually not accepted many other places. Luckily, here it is in Minnesota, but we need to start adapting to be able to reduce waste for that reason, too. While we're looking at containers for food specifically, there are a lot of issues within solid waste when it comes to plastic pollution. A lot of different types of plastic are in the waste stream. There's a lot of concerns about microplastics and a lot of unknowns yet about how that impacts human health. And there's also a lot of food waste that's involved in the food industry. So both being able to reduce plastic in the industry and also find ways to put that food waste into compost and into a more useful end market is at the top of our priorities. Plastic production continues to increase, and food waste, we waste about 30% of the food in total, and 4% to 10% of that is wasted even before businesses get it to the consumer. And so encouraging composting with food businesses in Roseville is also a key part of this. Some of the benefits that we noted throughout this process is that Ramsey County's solid waste fee tax is the highest, or one of the highest, in the state. Our businesses are taxed 70% on solid waste, so if they are able to divert things like recycling and compost out of their trash, they don't actually get taxed on those items, and so that could give them significant savings if they're able to reduce the sizes of their dumpsters. Food waste especially is a really heavy type of waste, so they can reduce a lot of that by diverting that to compost. It's also inefficient. They're paying for those containers. They're paying to get those containers delivered. They're paying to dispose of the product. They're paying a tax on that disposal, so if we can move to more recyclable, compostable options, that should also save them money in the long run as well. Quick overview of the engagement. We talked a little bit about this, but we did reach out to places like Hospitality Minnesota and quite a few professional organizations to try to spread the word among different businesses across the region, had those two in-person listening sessions, and then we also had those online surveys. Goals of this ordinance, should it get adopted, the first goal is to make sure that businesses are actually aware of the ordinance. Second goal is to understand, that they understand their supply options for what they need to make changes for, as well as their disposal options for if they wanted to add a composting, organics disposal to their waste stream. We also want to increase the residential recycling rate and recognize businesses that are already compliant, and I will go into detail with these goals as well. To make sure that businesses are aware of the ordinance, I plan to develop a one-page flyer that we can hand out to businesses and have that translated in several different languages, including Spanish, Mung, Somali, Karen, Nepali. Minneapolis has taken this approach as well with their Green to Go ordinance, and I think that would go a long way to try to make sure that everybody can understand what we're proposing. We'd also include a mailing to businesses several times throughout the next year to let them know about what's going on, what's expected of them, update the landing page on the city website so there's an easy place for people to go to find information, recommend holding two packaging fairs, one in the spring, one in the fall. St. Paul was planning on doing one this fall, but they're pushing it forward to the spring, so we would probably look into holding a joint packaging fair for both St. Paul and Roseville businesses, so kind of join forces with their enforcement staff, too. I would also look into doing more significant in-person outreach with businesses with a goal of meeting with between 10 and 15 businesses per month starting in February, which should reach almost all of the businesses, if not all of them, within the course of a year. I'd track those meetings in an Excel database, which we could use for mapping later on as well. Introduce the ordinance at a Roseville Business Council meeting so people have a chance to come and ask questions and learn about it, and then also hold an online webinar that we would record and later post, so if someone isn't able to attend, they can at least watch the webinar and contact me later. As far as helping businesses to understand their supply options, and there will be some repetition here, update that landing page so that those resources are available on the city website, hold those two packaging fairs so businesses can connect with suppliers, and as well as do a lot with that in-person outreach, let them know what their options are as well with things like biz recycling and financial and technical support. And as far as disposal options, same thing. Those packaging fairs would also include a representative from biz recycling, and biz recycling does a lot of work to help analyze hauler bills, help them find supplies. There's financial opportunities for businesses to offset their costs of a certain amount of packaging. I have got a side about that later, too. And also bring that information out when we do that in-person outreach. I did start doing that actually already earlier this year when we were doing some in-person outreach, bringing that, the actual grant application for biz recycling so that people could see what was required to apply. So I'm hopeful that some businesses are already taking advantage of it. Next goal is to increase the residential recycling rate. As I mentioned in our in-person outreach with businesses, I really wanted to stress that this is a two-way street, that we expect businesses to make this change, but at the same time, we also need to take responsibility to help educate residents on how to recycle properly so that when businesses are investing in these more expensive supplies, they're not just going right into the trash because that's just money that's being thrown away. So we would like to increase education at community events. I have been doing some of this already, but really putting a concerted focus on it in the next year to focus on education for recycling and understanding the process. With the upcoming change to waste management in our new hauler, do some collaboration work with them so that we understand what materials they accept, if there's any changes from our previous hauler, make sure that we can get a tour of their material recovery facility so we can understand how their recycling process, it works, if it's any different from Eureka's, as well as host a Recycling 101 webinar for residents just to both explain kind of the basics and also let people ask questions, because every time I talk to someone, there's always a lot of confusion about, what about this? What about that? And so giving people a chance to come and ask those questions and really kind of hear from experts, I think, would be really key. I'd also like to collaborate with Waste Management on getting residential tours of their material recovery facility, because I think, especially for myself, when I got to see Eureka's facility, it was really an aha moment to understand, this is why this is not recyclable, or this is why we separate these things out like this. And so I'd like to give residents that opportunity to do a couple of tours and see the new facility, too. Same thing with Ramsey Washington Recycling and Energy. We have our recycling and energy facility in Newport, and that's another really great opportunity. They love giving tours to residents and other people. I'd love to get people down there to see that. They also have the new organic sorting technology that's really cool to see in action, so I'd love to be able to bring some residents down there to see that. Promotion of our Environmental Service Center that's going up on Kent Street. There's a lot of new opportunities for education at that place and a lot of new ways that people can recycle, so making sure everyone knows how to really take full advantage of that facility, and also promotion of the food scraps pickup program once it eventually makes its way to Roseville. And then we will utilize, I'd like to utilize hauler reports from Waste Management as well to hear how we're doing with our recycling rates and what kind of contaminants they're seeing and that sort of thing, and that'll kind of depend on what they provide, because that's still kind of yet to be seen. As we know, there are some businesses that are already compliant with this proposed ordinance, and so I'd like to make sure that we do a good job recognizing those businesses early on. And so between that tracking database that I would create for that outreach, I'd like to develop a map. So you'll see a picture. This is St. Louis Parks' map from their Zero Waste Ordinance Initiative. They've created a tracking map where residents can go and see which businesses are already compliant with Green to Go. And so if I'm already creating an Excel tracking database, we can use that data to create an online map. I've already confirmed with our GIS person that she's able to create this for me. I'd also like to recognize those businesses in late 2025 at a Roseville Business Council meeting, just so that they're getting extra recognition that they went above and beyond early on, as well as using our Sustainable Stewart Program to provide additional recognition. As mentioned, there are some resources available for businesses that we'll really be pushing throughout this process. Biz recycling and Waste Wise is really the biggest program that's most important here. It's offered through the Minnesota Chamber of Commerce. We've talked about this a few times. They offer grants for materials, for extra bins, for training, for signage, and all sorts of different things. Couple other resources, especially for people interested in reusable materials. Minimize is another program through the Chamber of Commerce and Waste Wise that focuses on really reducing single-use plastic. And Rethink Disposable is another program through the Clean Water Fund and the Pollution Control Agency, and their main focus is shifting restaurants from using disposable materials for dining customers and moving to reusable ware. And their representative is really excited to work with Roseville, so I've been in touch with her already. Next steps, I would recommend, as I've been saying, 12-month phase-in for education and adaptation, just to give 170-plus businesses in Roseville a chance to adapt and understand what their options are. We'd hold those packaging fairs throughout the 12 months, observe if there's any need for any material exemptions based on what's happening in the market or what people might be having issues procuring. Early adopters receive extra recognition. And then post-12-month phase-in, once we start actually enforcing the ordinance, we would conduct annual site visits with restaurants to explain the ordinance, check inventory in their onsite collection facilities as well. So really much more of an educational versus punitive approach. And then throughout, we would just connect as much as we can with small businesses to make sure that they're aware of all the resources that are out Additional recommendations, I would recommend creating a specific Green to Go inbox for the city of Roseville so that all of those communications can get funneled into one central place. I manage a lot of different types of programs at the city, and so I want to make sure that those emails don't get kind of filtered out in any way or get missed. And that also creates a little bit easier things if there's staff transitions for who might manage what. It's nice to have it in one place. I know St. Louis Park has actually moved to this same kind of communication as well. We are planning on having a summer intern in 2025, so we would definitely be using their support to help with outreach and education. The Minnesota Green Corps applications will open up in early 2025, and I would plan to apply for one of those members to be a host site, both for our Green to Go implementation and for our Climate Action Plan efforts. And finally, this is a little bit small. I apologize about this, but it's kind of a draft timeline of what we're looking at, so anything in red is an event. So those packaging fairs, webinars, and then we'll have a few mailings go out throughout the year, and then that door-to-door visits with restaurants throughout. All right. Any questions or thoughts?
All right. Well, thank you for that. We appreciate the update and especially the information about sort of that next year before we get into the enforcement phase. I just wanted to comment, one thing that came to mind as you were talking about sort of the database of restaurants and sort of those early adopters, is to think about partnering with Visit Roseville also, so that can get onto their information about restaurants, because I think people that are looking for a place to eat in Roseville might appreciate knowing that the place they might be choosing is or is not an early adopter in that area. And with that, I'll open it up to questions from the council. Councilmember Strong.
I just have a quick question about the compostable materials. Will those be compostable at home?
That's a really great question, and some of them might be and some of them might not be, and that's going to be kind of part of our educational outreach that would really have to bring different materials to show people. So there's things like compostable plastics that you'll see, especially with silverware, kind of those like creamy white color plastics. That's really not something that's going to break down in your home compost. Anything plastic-like is really going to have to be something that will have to go into our drop site on Dale Street. And for a previous newsletter, I created a little Venn diagram that actually kind of shows what can go in our drop site, what can go in your home compost, what can go in both, because there's a lot of differences between the two. And so I think refining that and distributing that pretty widely is going to be an important part of this process.
Do you anticipate any of those going to be able to add it to the food scraps pickup program?
Yeah.
When that happens, would those type of items be able to be added, too?
Yeah, because the food scraps pickup program is all going to a commercial industrial compost facility, so that's much higher heat processing, so it'll break down those materials much better than your backyard compost would.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other questions? It's Councilmember Graff. I don't know if that was your hand going up, or you were reaching for your glasses.
Not so much a question, as I really appreciate the approach of education rather than penalties, because that's the way, I think, makes sense to do this. And I liked the fair side of it, because I know you bring specific examples to those things, and it really helps people see like, oh, so that cover to the cup, you know, is different than that part.
Yeah, and we even had at our community meetings, we had a few packaging reps at those as well, and even some of the restaurants had a chance to connect with them there. And I have actually been seeing even shifts in some of those restaurants that attended those fairs. I've seen changes in their materials just in the last couple of months, which is exciting to see. But yeah, we're not the experts. The packaging folks are the experts, and so we'll definitely have as many different people there as possible.
Good. Thanks. Any other questions? Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes, thank you for working on this. I know it's been a long process, but I like because it's been thought out, and there's been multiple conversations around different parts. And I really think that important part is that you're going to be doing those visits to the restaurants. I think that some of the businesses are so busy, and to, you know, to show up for webinars or some of these things can be a challenge, and that you're actually going to go in and talk to them one-on-one, I think is really going to be key here, because we want to make sure people understand, you know, not just why, but, you know, how we can help in making this, you know, successful for everyone. So that, I think, is really key.
And I really appreciate some of the one-on-one conversations I've already had to be able to understand what are these restaurants seeing, what are some of the challenges they're already dealing with between either their hauling situation, if they're renting a space, or what materials are available to them. So I'm really looking forward to that part of the process.
All right. Just a very technical matter. On the ordinance itself, I did note in talking with staff that there was some slightly confusing wording under Section 2 of the ordinance on the very last page at the top, and this is the effective date. And so I believe we've incorporated into the actual language. Is that it up there?
No, it's probably not that one.
But anyway, new language that is just a little more quick and clear, which simply says, "Upon its passage and publication, this ordinance shall take effect on February," it used to be January 1st, 2025, "with the exception of Section 4, 12.05, which shall take effect on January 1st, 2026." I think there was a lot of extra whills and shells that somehow, through the drafting process, found their way in there, and so that was just to clarify that. That's a little clearer way of stating it and doesn't affect the rest of the content.
I would defer to our city attorney, Rachel, to kind of help us figure out the correct way to word that.
So our city manager and I kind of worked it out ahead of time.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, the one that's for your signature, if you do pass it tonight, has the correct wording.
Right. That's what I was figuring, and I just wanted to point that out to folks, because maybe nobody else had seen or heard about that. Councilmember Schroeder.
Yeah, just, and now that we're in the ordinance, I just have a small question. On Section G, it talks about a range for the collection by a licensed solid waste collector. Are we inferring that it has to be licensed in Roseville or just licensed anywhere?
That's a really good question. These are commercial haulers, so it's going to be different than our residential hauler situation. So I believe it would just be anyone who is just licensed properly, and I can double-check back on that if needed.
Thank you.
Right. Councilmember Strong?
Yeah, I wanted to check in on the timeline, just because you're saying you're not able to start until February in the site visits. And with 170 businesses in 11 months, if you were really ready on February 1st, that's 15.4 businesses per month. And if you're looking at 10 to 15 per month, just wondering on the reasonableness if it's something that should go into effect sooner, but with enforcement starting in January 1st of '26, just so that there's more reasonable amount of time for it to happen, or just making sure that bandwidth-wise, there's that opportunity?
That's a great question, and I think I created that timeline with the idea that we would roll it out kind of January 1st, so we would spend the next couple of months preparing that flyer, the mailing materials, and those mailings would go out in January, and we would give restaurants a chance, businesses a chance to digest that, and then we would begin stopping by and arranging those visits after that fact. We can also accelerate that 10 to 15 businesses per month timeframe during summer when we have an extra intern as well. I know our Parks Department also has an AmeriCorps member, too, that's expressed interest. interest in sustainability work, and depending on his bandwidth, we may be, may be able to leverage, leverage some support from him as well throughout the year, depending on what he has going on. But between myself and our intern support, I, I'm confident we can get through that. And then with, if we are able to secure a Green Corps member for 2026, that'll also really help that process.
And just as an aside, I've visited three of the new businesses in Roseville in the last two weeks, I think, and all three of them had, were initially started elsewhere, and so all three of them were, were really far in their process already of adopting the green to go, so maybe you will be pleasantly surprised that some of the folks, at least those who have, um, are part of more of a chain, might have things happening across their system, because they've already had to adapt in other cities.
Yeah, yeah, and I know some chains actually required an ordinance to be in place before they would actually release those compostable materials, so that their locations in Roseville too, so, um, there'll be, it'll, it'll be a transition.
Thanks.
Right, are there any other questions from councilmembers? Do want to provide an opportunity for public comment, if there's anyone in the public who wishes to speak and support our opposition to our adoption of the Green to Go ordinance as it's been outlined, or, or has any suggestions for changes or improvements, this would be the opportunity to speak. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this ordinance this evening? All right, well, with that, we'll close the opportunity for public comment and move to council consideration. Councilmember Atten.
Yeah, I'd like to move the ordinance as presented in the packet, including the changed language, uh, on that last section, starting in line 148.
Second.
Right, it's been moved by councilmember Atten, seconded by councilmember Schroeder. Uh, discussion on the motion, is the maker of the motion, councilmember Atten?
I didn't have any questions before, we exchanged an email earlier today, so I, I would like to compliment you on the very thorough, excellent work, not only what you've already done, but your plans for the, uh, coming months and couple of years. Um, uh, you, you are an excellent employee, and your team has done a fantastic job moving this forward. I brought this forward in 2019, and want to retire in two months, and I'm super pleased this is, this is happening here, I appreciate your work.
Well, thank you so much.
Yeah, I think there were two things you were looking to do before the end of your time, was, was this and getting a raise for councilmembers.
Especially for the mayor.
As the second of the motion, councilmember Schroeder.
No, and, and again, we've had multiple conversations, you know, too, and, and I've been supportive of this, and I'm just really pleased as well, is that we could get to a point where we're finally going to do it.
Well, I, I just want to, I appreciate all the really great discussions we've had over the years, and it's been very helpful for me to kind of formulate this plan as well, so it's a two-way street, and I appreciate all the, all the conversations we've had.
Great, other discussion on the motion. And I'll just echo the appreciation that's been expressed, and I'll include in that, uh, some of the early adopter cities who gave us an example to follow, uh, both as what to do and perhaps as what to not do. Uh, we always appreciate our, our daring and fearless, uh, fellow cities in that regard, because I think it helps everyone do better. Uh, with that, we've got the motion before us to adopt the Green to Go ordinance as presented with the change on the effective date language. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, that ordinance is adopted, and I think we do have a summary.
You do.
Yes, we do. Is there a motion related to publishing a summary?
Second.
Right, it's been moved by councilmember Graff, seconded by councilmember Strong. Uh, any discussion on that motion? Once again, this is to allow publication of a summary, this does require a two-thirds vote, which in our case is four-fifths. Uh, all those in favor of approving the publication of a summary signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, meeting the two-thirds requirement. Thank you again, Ms. Bakken.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right, switching gears, but still in the realm of ordinances, although not for adoption this evening. We have, uh, a different topic, and this is in relation to, uh, the changes that have been made at the legislature over the last couple of years with respect to cannabis in Minnesota, and how cities need to adapt our regulations to those changes. Uh, and we've had some discussions on that earlier this year, uh, and this is our next touch on this with some draft ordinance language that's being brought forward. Uh, so without me going into the whole presentation, I'll turn it over to Janice Gunlock, our Community Development Director, uh, to kick off the conversation here, no doubt ably supported by our city attorney, Ms. Tierney.
I was just going to say, thanks, Mayor, members of the council. Um, myself and the city attorney are going to take some turns going through some slides here quickly. Um, just to reiterate, everything in these slides is in your packet, we just thought it would help organize the discussion a little bit better. We also have a slide with some questions that have come up over the weekend since the packet went out, so the full council can get an idea of what the other questions are. Um, really quickly, just a little bit of background information for those who maybe are just coming in at the, on this discussion. Um, Chapter 342 of Minnesota statutes was adopted by the legislature in 2023, they amended it again this last session. Um, it relates to the adult-use cannabis law. The city enacted a moratorium on July 8th of this year related to adult-use cannabis businesses. This was in anticipation of potentially early license issuance happening, although if you've been hearing in the news, I don't think any of that's really happened, but we do have a moratorium in place right now. Um, the, uh, Minnesota Office of Cannabis Management, we'll refer to them as OCM, released model ordinances in July of this year as well. The actual legalization takes effect on January 1st, that's when our moratorium expires. Um, to date, we've had three meetings, two with the Planning Commission, one with the City Council, related to, uh, the adult-use cannabis regulations locally. Um, those three meetings have informed the draft ordinances that are provided in your packets this evening and what we're asking for feedback on. Um, the three ordinances, uh, each address a different topic. One relates to the zoning aspect of this legalization, the other is registration of certain businesses, and then the last one is related to temporary cannabis events. I believe this slide our city attorney is going to handle.
So this first slide here is talking about the portion of your ordinance that, um, regulates the registration of businesses and the zoning certifications, if you recall that part of the conversation. Um, and, um, I won't, I won't bore you with all walking through the entire ordinance, it's, it's before you, but there are a few choices, um, for you to make. Um, and one was the source of a question that, uh, Mayor Rowe sent today about, um, the cap on registration. When we met, um, whenever that was, like, a month ago, to discuss this, um, the council had indicated that they did want a cap on registrations. And maybe one point of clarity that I should have covered better was that there are actually two ways to impose a cap on registration, and you can choose either or both. So the first way is to put a cap on registration as one, per every 12,500 residents in the city of Roseville. So for Roseville, that gets you a three. But you can also put a cap on registration that is actually governed by how many licenses have been issued in the county. And so in this case, it would be if Ramsey County had one per 12,500 residents without any of those being in Roseville, Roseville could actually have zero. So you can use that county cap as your cap. Many cities are choosing to actually use both of these caps, that's how the draft is, but you can choose one, the other, both, neither, your own number, however you want to do it, but those, those, it's a little odd that we're calling it a cap, because it's actually kind of a floor, for how many you have to allow. You, you can allow more than that number in kind of any configuration you could come up with.
Just to clarify, though, I think it can be used by cities as a cap.
Yes.
Even though you talk about it, it's sort of a floor, because we could allow more.
You could.
You just can't allow, you can't cap it any fewer than that.
Yes, you cannot have fewer than that.
Right.
But you may have more than that, and you could have no cap at all, so.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Um, the drafted rate, so you will see that there's, there is, um, we talked about the pre-licensed certification of cannabis business, they've actually added a little clarity to that section based on some conversations that we had with staff. Um, the pre-licensed certification, as described in the statute, indicates it's a, it's a, a zoning certification, but then it's also for, um, for building and fire code. Um, it, it's pretty likely that at the time of the zoning certification, the, the business won't be built out, it won't be ready to go. So the idea of doing a fire and building code inspection, for some businesses will be able to happen, but for others, that will have to wait until later, and so we've just added that clarity to this section, that there will be businesses that will not be able to be certified for purposes of fire and building code at the time that this pre-licensed certification happens. Um, the next section, 318.04, is just about registration of retailers, that they must register before they can operate. Um, and then 318.05 is the section that sets the cap on registration, and it offers some detail about how that counting will happen, um, and, and how that will all work, and how you'll know how many it is. Again, there's, there's not a lot of guidance for us at the state, but there's an assumption that most cities that, that the, the 12,500 number, how will you know, will come from the state demographer about how many, how large the population of Roseville is. Um, now, there is a choice for you to make here down in Section B of that, of that 318.04, oh, five, pardon me, and that is, um, there are a, a few different, um, choices to make about what you will include or not include in that cap. So there are two kinds of licenses related to licensing, um, related to Native American tribes. And, um, there are two different kinds of Native American licenses that may happen. One is, uh, is issued by a tribe for operation on tribal-controlled property. It's really unlikely that's going to happen in Roseville, uh, but it could potentially happen in Ramsey County, depending on any number of factors. Um, the more likely issue would be that either Ramsey County or even the city of Roseville could, could be impacted by a compact that the state enters into with a tribe, which is, it appears, going to allow, um, tribal, oper, a tribal entity to operate off tribal property. And so there could be a license that's issued related to a tribe that isn't on tribal property. If there is one of those in Ramsey County or in the city of Roseville, you can choose to have that license be included in your cap of three, or you can choose to make that an exception to your cap and have that business operate, um, in Roseville and not have the cap apply. I know that's very complicated, but it, the question is whether you're not, you want to include those kinds in the cap of three or allow those to operate independent of the cap. And then there are two kinds of licenses, lower potency hemp retailers, mechanical combination businesses, those are simply not, um, included in the retail cap. So the really only choice here to make is whether you want to include those tribal licenses, if they are issued as taking up one of those cap businesses, the, one of those potential, potential registrations, I'm struggling for the right way to describe this, um, one of those potential registrations or not.
I have a question about that. So if we don't include it, would that say then they can have as many of these in Roseville? Is, so if we don't include it, basically there's no number saying, oh, so just hypothetically, they could have 20 in Roseville that wouldn't go towards the cap? Or how, how, I mean, if we don't include it, is there, you know, we can't cap that?
Councilmember Schroeder, I wish I could explain better what this compact arrangement is going to look like. I, I simply don't know. I spent a fair amount of time today, based on councilmember Atten's question, trying to figure out, um, whether there's guidance on it, and I wasn't able to, to understand what the tribal compact might mean. Um, what I will say is, if you choose to include it in the cap because we don't understand, that is something you could always change your mind on later. It's, it's much harder to go the other way than it is to use that as part of your cap at this point and decide later that you'd like to link it.
And just to be clear, to include it in the cap, we would not have an exception for it.
Correct.
Okay, so it's a little inverse thinking there.
Now you know I am having trouble.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Councilmember Strong.
Um, are the travelally issued licenses given priority in that cap?
My understanding is, well, if the license is issued by the tribe, the tribe is a sovereign authority, that is a license issued by the tribe and governed by the tribe, so that, that is entirely separate. Within the compact, I'm not sure. It appears from the, from the language of the regulation and some of the other materials, that the state, that the state will actually issue the licenses as part of those compacts, but that's not perfectly clear.
All right. Food for thought.
Food for thought.
All right.
Um, okay, so then 318.07, um, is, oh, and just also, 318.07 just talks about what the application for registration would require, um, the fees that would need to be paid. Um, and we do, we did put language in there, um, which is part of the recommendations in the OCM, um, model ordinance, just to indicate, how are you going to choose who you're going to give license to? What, what I've recommended and what frankly, I think, where it's easiest for everyone is a simple first-come, first-served. Maybe someone will think of a creative idea, um, in the future that we could steal from, but at this point, that feels like the best way to go in my mind, but if you have any creative ideas, we can certainly, um, figure out how, another option. Um, 318.09 outlines the various basis for denial. Um, these are straight out of the, the, um, the state statute. There's a, within this ordinance, there are some redundancies with the state statute. I, I generally don't like to put redundancies in ordinances, but sometimes it's helpful just to provide that guidance to your staff and to anyone who comes to apply. So when you hear me say this is just echoing state law, that's mainly the reason for that. You could take it out, and then we could just defer to state law, because you're, you're bound by it anyway. Um, let's see, issuance of registration or renewal, um, if they are eligible, you will issue the registration. Um, registrations are non-transferable, either from person-to-person, entity-to-entity, or place-to-place. Um, enforcement, I think we talked about enforcement, um, being a fine or a suspension. It doesn't appear from the statute that you would have the authority independently to revoke. Um, if you do impose a fine or suspension, you would still give notice and right to hearing, that old due process, notice and opportunity to be heard, we build that into these. Um, in an emergency, if there is an emergency situation at the discretion of the city, which means that the business poses an imminent threat to the health or safety of the public, the city can immediately suspend. You also have to immediately notify the Office of Cannabis Management, who they will give expedited attention to. Um, if the OCM says you have to, you have to reinstate, you have to reinstate. Um, and then, Mayor, did you want to wait on, on your question until later?
Um, this is, since we're here, we could probably just at least introduce the topic. So the only thing that came to mind as I was reading this section about enforcement was, there could be a scenario where the OCM revokes a license, a license, and we've got a registration in effect. And just to, like, avoid any misunderstanding, we may want to say that if a license is revoked by the OCM, the registration, you know, is revoked, needs to be reapplied for, or something like that, you know, automatically. I'm not sure we need a due process in that situation for our action on a registration, but that's my suggestion, is we think about a way to, to incorporate that, because even though it seems fairly unlikely that if they've got a revoked license, they could somehow use our registration to continue to do business, it probably, just from the point of view of keeping things straight, makes sense for us to track with the state's action in regard to a license. So that was my, my suggestion there, uh, and we, the attorney and I had some thoughts as to how that could be incorporated, and since we're not adopting this evening, I think we can just have the conversation as to whether it makes sense to, to incorporate something like that at the appropriate time.
Um, did you want to, I don't want to steam forward if the council wanted to discuss.
I think we're going to kind of go through this and then come back for discussion, if that's all right.
Um, and again, all enforcement actions get reported to the OCM. Um, there are penalties, misdemeanor violation, administrative fine, and, um, also enforcement of this chapter can happen through licenses held by that business that are issued by the city. So while the city will not have the authority to revoke a license issued by the state, uh, the city could still take action against a license held by the city could still take action against a license held by the business that also held the registration.
A city license held by the business?
Correct. So we do have some retailer operations. First is compliance check. Again, this city is required by state law to do one per year. You could do more. As we discussed, when we discussed this last, we've added the hours of operations. We came as close as we could to the off-sale liquor hours, and so that's reflected in the ordinance. We require display of the license and registration and then also indicate that they're subject to the city's sign code. And again, that's something that's permitted by state law, but if it isn't in here, there'd be an open question as to whether it applied. So that's why it's included. Lower potency hemp, it's going to look a lot like the cannabis ordinance. Again, compliance check, minimum of once per year, must and requires display, and then advertising. And based on our conversation last time, we did not include an hours requirement in the lower potency hemp regulation. And I think we got to everything.
All right.
You want?
Oh, we have a new slide for that. Oh, sorry.
More opportunities. So this is the first of the three ordinances we're looking at. Does the council want to take up each ordinance and have discussion about each one in turn? Or do we want to do the presentation about each one and then go back to have conversations about them?
Do one at a time.
One at a time? All right, so we have the registration, I should look this way too, but I'm hearing agreement from both sides of me here. So as to the registration ordinance, thoughts from the council or questions certainly for our attorney or Ms. Gunlock. I think the first, you know, question to talk about maybe is that notion of whether we, we put, for lack of a better word, a super cap on our cap by using the county number. You know, and just my initial thought on it is kind of twofold. I'm not sure the county may ever get to their cap countywide, but you never know, there could be 40 in St. Paul or something like that. And my second thought is, I'm not really sure that we should be artificially capping our number based on that to say that, say if the county gets to its number, we aren't going to have any if nobody's gotten one yet. That seems kind of unfair to our business community from my point of view, but I'd open it up to other thoughts from councilmembers. Councilmember Schrader.
Yeah, I think my thoughts are, the more we can control within the city and not give it to the county to figure out, I think that makes sense that we'd want to keep it here. So yeah, I agree with what you said, Mayor, on that piece of it, that, you know, if we, especially if we're looking at our population, we're talking about three, you know? And so I would, I would agree with that. And then, of course, I know you haven't quite gotten it, but I would also think we'd want to include that and not exclude the tribal registrations as well in that. And just exactly what the attorney was talking about, it is much easier to take it out later. This thing is so not defined, and I think, I think we lock it down more than less and then, and then go the other way because, you know, I think it's going to continually evolve. And once it's out of the, you know, they say this, you know, genie's out of the bottle or whatever, you can't put it back in. So I would support that as well.
And just to be clear, you're saying you support not providing exemption to the cap for those tribal?
No, don't put exemptions to the exemptions. So yes.
Mr. Mayor, could I just make sure we're all understanding what that Ramsey County or the county cap is? So that is an and, so it's, we limited to three, and if the county has the amount of caps, the amount of licenses that are equal to the cap of 12,500, which is 44, 45 in the whole county, then we don't need to issue any more licenses. So if we have two in business and a third one comes, but the county is at capacity, we're not required then to issue another one.
Right.
So it works in conjunction, not separately?
Well, I think I understood that, but I think the point being is that if the county gets filled up and we don't have any in Roseville, why would we say we wouldn't allow up to our three in Roseville? That's my only point with that. So?
I would say, just to push back a little on that, the one, only reason I see is if everything's lined up on our board or in St. Paul and we have 30 of them, maybe we don't want a third in Roseville.
It's possible, once again, yeah. I think the point being is that it looks at the whole county, regardless of where they are in the county, so.
So unlikely to happen.
So they could all be lined up on Larpinter Avenue or Rice Street, I suppose, but not knowing that, I don't know, you know, three, three's already a limit and.
And there would just be one, like you said, one more. It wouldn't be, if there are already 30 there, it's.
If Ramsey County's just snap is up to 44, 45, and we haven't issued any registrations, the way we've got it worded, we couldn't issue any, even any of our three. So that's where, it just seems to me, maybe we're pushing a little too far, but that's just me, and this is for the council to decide, so.
I thought it could be either way. I thought it could be.
Well, like City Manager Tregeon said, it's an and. So if we haven't issued all of our three yet.
I see.
And the county is above their total, then.
Then that's what.
We're limited to whatever we've issued. Thoughts from other councilmembers on either or any of these items? Councilmember?
I'm okay with us having our own cap and not worrying about the county, per se. And I, too, would remove the exemptions on line 130, lines 137 through 140 for the tribal businesses that could be included in our cap rather than being separate.
Thoughts on any of those points, Councilmember Schrader?
I am agreeing that the city cap of three gives us a little bit more control than, and allows us to know kind of where we're at. And I agree with the exemption to the exemption of. I think, again, it provides us an opportunity to, it's always easier to make changes later on if we find that things are different than we expect, but it's good to come out of the gate with a little bit more understanding. I do approve of the establishment of the hours as indicated, and I think it makes good sense to have that echo our off-sale alcohol sales.
Other thoughts? I'm trying to think if there are other items that were brought up that were discussion points. Well, certainly the discussion about whether we automatically revoke if the license has been revoked by the state, I mean, it seems kind of administratively appropriate.
Yes.
Doesn't seem to be any objection to that. Challenge will be how we word that, but we've got folks for that. Councilmember Schrader?
I'm not sure we have an address set this yet this evening, is the buffer requirements? I don't know. Is that on another slide, Ms. Tierney?
The buffer requirements, Councilmember Schrader, the buffer requirements are not included in this draft because at the, when we met with, when the council met last, there was a decision that I understood that there was desire not to impose buffers. We could, of course, add that back in, but that's why they're not in here.
Okay. I had an opportunity to speak with a business that is adjacent to a daycare, and they were concerned about the empty storefront between them and the daycare potentially being available. And so I think I would be open, and I know that, I believe, Councilmember Eddin and I were both in support of considering some type of buffer zone, I think, between a daycare center, a residential treatment facility. I actually thought that all of the buffers, as indicated, as optional, or something that could be advantageous. We noted that most of our schools are not going to be in that position, but that doesn't necessarily take into account a charter school that might be in a non-traditional location. And I think for me, it's more about, obviously, onsite consumption is not allowed, but parking lot consumption in a liquor store is really common, just look in the parking lot. And so odor and consumption around the vicinity. So I'd be in support of maintaining the buffer zones on the school, daycare, the residential facility, and the parks. And I'm open to discussion on a buffer between that and other cannabis businesses.
Thoughts on the buffers, Councilmember Schrader?
And I believe I supported that as well last time we talked, so I would, I would definitely support those. You know, all the locations you talked about, I think it makes sense because I'm sure you've seen the couple of people just talking about the odor just from a plant being grown, let alone if you light it up. And so if you're next to a daycare or a school or a treatment center and you're in the parking lot and you're doing that, yeah, I think, you know, it's amazing how far that travels. So I would be in support of buffer zone.
What are the state laws about public consumption within distances of those types of places? Seems to me there was something in the state law about something to do with that, if I remember right.
Mayor Row, I don't recall seeing that. I cannot swear it's not there, but that's not a regulation that I recall. What I do recall is that cities may regulate public consumption, and so perhaps that's what you're thinking of?
Well, I thought there was something in state law, though, specific to schools that comes to mind, if not other, other types of places. So we may have to do a little more research on that, but I could have sworn there was something in that regard. And I'm, of course, not going to find where it is.
I thought there was something about that you could do it, and they had certain footage or something somewhere.
Because I was thinking that we were sort of deferring on the consumption side of things to the state law, but I think we're going to have to do some checking on that to be sure. I guess I would be, I would be concerned about putting in these buffers if consumption is already regulated in those locations. And I just don't know for sure at this point that we know the answer to that, but that's my thought on that. Other thoughts, Councilman Eddin?
I would love to note that if there, if that rule is there, even if it was maybe a common wall buffer, thinking about the odors that certainly, again, we have someone with something in their yard that several neighbors are complaining about, so. So I would look at that. I think our discussion last time really came around to where do you draw that line? How many places are really dealing with this? How much control are we going to do over the, over the market, right? So I would not, if there's open consumption, want a marijuana business next door to a childcare center.
I think that makes sense.
I think that makes sense. So however we would tackle that, I would be open to that. I don't, not ready for 500-foot rules around everywhere.
Yeah, I think it was more of, you know, I think we need to look at it. I don't, I don't think I have the answer how much or what does that look like, but I do think we need to figure out a way to do that. Yeah, that makes sense.
Thoughts on buffers as a topic? I know we talked a fair amount about this at the last, and if I remember right, sort of our conclusion was that we didn't feel that because we were limiting the number to three, that the buffers really entered into it.
Be very rare.
But, you know, being that the topic's been raised again, I guess I'd like the clarification on state law regarding consumption or what regulation there is on the consumption within certain distances, and then, you know, figuring out if we, how we would handle buffers in the case of if we want to put them in because it doesn't look like state laws adequately addressing it. Other thoughts?
They do have, in the ordinance, the model ordinance, they're talking about buffer requirements under Section 3, but you just may do it, and they have.
Right, but that's talking about what cities may do, right?
Right, right. But at least it gives us an idea because they're talking about 0 to 500 feet or whatever. So it kind of gives a parameter around that maybe we want to look at.
Well, anyway, let's, we're going to have to follow up on that, I think, just to have an understanding of where we're at.
Actually, Mayor, good spot, Councilmember Schrader. I'm looking at the, if you, I think you have it in your materials, page seven of, it says, "Consumption is only allowed on private property or licensed businesses with an onsite consumption endorsement. Consumption is not allowed in public."
Right. Ah, what I was trying to remember too. An onsite consumption endorsement. Is that part of our registration process, or is that part of the state licensing process?
It is part of the state licensing process, but what's a little deceiving here is the, there is not a place where, there is not a state license that would allow onsite consumption of smoked cannabis. It's only edible or it's edibles, drinkables, that kind of thing, but not, there's no, you can't smoke, there's no smoking lounge, other than at cannabis events.
Right, which we addressed in our other ordinance.
Right.
So is that saying that there is, there is no consumption allowed in public under the state law? I'm just trying to remember what you said there in terms of that.
I am looking at them, I am looking at what has been published by OCM. I'm not looking at the statute. I tried to search that quick and too many words are repeated. I can't, I can't narrow it down quick enough, but what the.
Where in the model ordinance is that?
I'm actually looking at the manual itself. If you look at page seven.
God, that might be the piece that I didn't print out. Ha ha, of course.
Would you like my printed packet, man?
That's all right.
I have my own book.
Pretty letters over here.
It's in there.
So where is that now, specifically on this page seven?
If you look at this page, it says for individuals, and then it says consumption. Only allowed on private property or at licensed businesses with onsite consumption endorsements. Consumption is not allowed in public.
Consumption is not allowed in public. Okay.
Is alcohol consumption allowed in public?
I believe so.
Yes. We've had a discussion on that before.
With our, with our other exemptions of driving and our parks.
So is, how is private property defined here? Is it, is it individual residence-type property, or is it, because I mean, a business is considered private property?
Mayor, what I'd like to ask is that because this is in their manual and I'm not looking at the statute, I don't want to guess.
Right.
And so I will come back to you with an actual answer of what I think all of this means. I just want to point that out to you because it appears that that's what the statute is going to say, but without the language in front of me, I'm not comfortable offering up a guess.
Yep. No, and that's why we, I think it made sense to bring it back for more discussion with more information. So I know we even had some discussion about consumption as it related to our ordinance about consumption of lots of things in our parks. And so we had information that was timely and fresh at that time that we don't have at the tips of our brains right now. Councilmember Eddin?
Actually, what I was going to ask about, as you look at this, we created a zone in our parks as well as on our city campus and a few other facilities that did not allow smoking. Does, if, because I feel like this was a change that happened in the 2024 session. Does this supersede that in the sense that it actually is going to be more expansive than what we passed?
With regard to cannabis?
With regards to public use of cannabis.
I imagine that the attorney's response may be, maybe. Let me look it up.
That's exactly the attorney's response. I know that we need changes regarding public smoking in public.
Yeah.
And that that was, that was to apply to both tobacco and to cannabis. And so that's what's giving me a lot of pause about what I'm reading here because it doesn't, my memory's not matching up. So I will, I will get back to you on this point.
Yep. Great.
All right.
All right. There was one other thing, and now I've got to find my page here. Just a question, this is a very, very technical ordinance construction question. I don't want to ruin trains of thought here. I'm looking at 318.06 of our ordinance proposed under processing registration. It says, the date of, this is the last sentence, starting on line 154, "The date of a certification under 318.03, which is essentially the zoning certification, is issued, will have no impact on the applicant's registration processing and is not an indication that the cap on registrations," I think that should say has been met, because we're saying that a certification doesn't. doesn't create a registration. So I think it's saying is not an indication that the cap on registrations has been met. But I wanted to ask the question because I wanted to be sure that we were all on the same page with what we were trying to say there and how we were saying it.
That may be inartful drafting and maybe the fact that it's giving us this much pause means I should take another crack at that. The intent of the language is, what we don't want to do is have someone come and say, but you gave me zoning certification, how can you tell me there are no registrations available?
Right, yeah, exactly.
So that's clearly a poorly drafted sentence. Give me another shot.
You get another shot. We'll even give you two if needed.
I feel like the intent of the sentence is kind of the same, whether it has the word "not" in it or not.
Right.
But it's clear without it.
Yeah, I agree. Okay. That's all I had on this one. Is there anything else on the registration ordinance that we may not have covered that people had flagged in their notes or anywhere? Doesn't appear to be the case. All right. Then, I believe, so just to clarify, so I think we've, as a council said, we don't want to put in the Ramsey County limit with the "and" on our cap. We are not doing the exemptions for the tribal type and compact tribal, tribal compact type exemptions to our cap. We're checking on that 318.06 language. We're checking on how we want to talk about state revocations. And we're to be determined on buffers pending more information and research on various points. Councilmember Strawn?
Did we discuss the signage as indicated and what the Roseville sign code would be that would be permitted in this situation?
I think it's the same signs that any other retail establishment can have under code. We just wanted to make sure that we were clear that, as I understood it from the attorney, that the code applies.
That's correct. I will say that there are some state regulations on signage as well. Those would apply under state law, but the city's code will lay on top of those as well.
So what's next, zoning or events?
It's like events.
It's events. All right. Which is still, I believe, mysterious.
It is.
I was trying to give you a break.
I know. Okay, so temporary events. Just for a little context, a lot of cities have an event ordinance that regulates special events in their parks, sometimes special events everywhere. Every city's a little bit different, but since Roseville doesn't have one, this is a lot more robust than what a lot of other cities are doing. A lot of other cities are just slipping cannabis events into their event ordinance, but what we've done here is given you a standalone, and that's why.
If I may just clarify ahead of the start, we do have an event policy and a process for events primarily related to, I think, amplified sound. So I'm guessing that that echoes those parts of that in here, if not more strict. And you can highlight those when you get to them. I just was...
Not really. No, they weren't cross-referenced at all.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to check.
And I will say that I strongly advise you to get this in ordinance and not policy, just because of, we've got the state law that, you know, in order to, although the state is giving cities, in my opinion, quite a bit more authority over regulating events than it's giving you over regulating standalone businesses, I still would highly recommend they be in ordinance.
I don't think anybody's questioning that.
Okay, just checking.
All right.
Okay, so we've defined some different terms. We don't necessarily need to go into that, but the first kind of point of conversation here is I've defined park feature, residential treatment facility, and school. You only need those definitions if you want to regulate the locations of special events as they relate to those uses. So I think we had a discussion about whether you would allow events in parks or whether you would allow them near parks. So this is kind of teeing up that conversation for you. Those terms are included. They don't need to be included if we're not going to use them for anything. We do define special services. Essentially, what the city's role in these events is going to be is pretty minor. The state law is fairly robust with regard to its requirements of these events. It requires onsite licensed security. And in fact, I noticed today that the security personnel are prohibited from using cannabis or low potency hemp for 24 hours before the event. I didn't realize that was there. I thought it was kind of interesting. It does, the state law gives you a little regulation of fees. It regulates where you have to, in your application for the special event, you have to explain where consumption would be allowed if you decide to allow consumption, how you're going to get rid of, how you're going to dispose of particular cannabis waste, pretty robust regulations. So what the majority of this ordinance is for is to kind of make some regulatory choices, but also if you were to get a really big event and you were to need extra police services to block a street or what have you, this allows the city to recover those costs from the event itself. That's a lot of what you're going to see here is for that purpose. And it also allows you to deny an event if it's happening at a time that the city's resources will be stretched. So right around your, yeah, right around Rosefest, you probably don't want a giant cannabis event coming to town because that would overly tax your resources. This gives you the ability to use that as a basis for denial. Okay, so you require a permit for your temporary cannabis event, outlining the permit application. Again, the main purpose of this is to get the information from them, to allow you, kind of to be able to get in touch with them, but they're also going to give you a copy of the state application. And like I said, the state application is very robust, and that will give you the information that you need about the layout and what kinds of vendors they're going to have and if you allow consumption, where that consumption will happen, what is their security plan. All of that is contained in the state application. I have required in this that you would have an application filed at least 30 days in advance of the event. Some cities don't require any notice at all. Some cities would require significantly more. 30 days is a ballpark. You could decide to go longer or shorter. That's really just, again, to tee up the conversation. Permit application review, again, the main review for the city is going to be determining whether special services are required. You may be in a situation where an applicant doesn't ask for special services, but once you review the application, you decide that special services are necessary. This allows you to say, no, actually, you do need to block off that street. No, actually, we do need extra squads onsite. So this gives you the authority to do that, gives you the authority to deny for several reasons. These are lifted straight out of ordinances from other cities for bases that they use for denial. You know, you could add to this list or take away from it as you see fit. Fees for special services, again, this is how you're going to recover the costs that the city ends up spending in order to support the event. Generally, you would set the rates in your fee ordinance. So you would say, this is how much we charge for police services. This is how much we charge to block the street. Whatever it is, you would put those in your annual fee ordinance so that those charges would be transparent. You could choose, instead of publishing it, to just choose your actual costs. I'd encourage you not to do that. I'd encourage you to get those published. They're just, when you're charging actual costs, you're more vulnerable to a challenge that you're just trying to raise money. It looks more transparent to say, oh, those are the fees. They're right there in black and white, and I can see what they are. But you can definitely do it either way. I included a requirement that the event organizer indemnify the city and purchase liability insurance. And then again, if onsite consumption is prohibited, you would want that to be a specific provision in the insurance policy to make sure that the insurance company is aware that the event they're covering allows onsite consumption. I did provide an ability for the city to waive the insurance. You wouldn't have to include that provision. A lot of cities do. You wouldn't have to, particularly for cannabis events. Maybe it's not as good a fit for cannabis events as it is for other kinds of events. So then we have the cannabis event regulations. The draft just has that you would prohibit cannabis events on city-owned property. Again, you can choose to do that or choose not to do it. I did put a buffer in here just as kind of a placeholder. Again, totally a choice. And then if there's other location restrictions, for example, whether you'd want to prohibit cannabis events from occurring, you know, abutting residential property or, you know, whatever other requirements you would want to put in place. You can have an hours restriction if you choose. Again, you should say in this ordinance whether or not you'll allow onsite consumption. Even if you choose to allow it, I would put that in black and white as well. I did prohibit overnight sleeping, and honestly, I thought that I read that in state law, but now I'm doubting my memory again. But you could prohibit people from staying overnight, an explicit regulation of noise so that it's clear that they are required to follow your noise ordinance. And then if they did violate the noise ordinance, that would give you a basis to shut the event down at that point as well. And then, of course, we require that they follow all of state law. The enforcement's going to look pretty familiar. Misdemeanor, administrative fine, and grounds for revocation of the permit. So the questions for you are whether you would like buffers, whether 30 days is a sufficient notice, too much, too little, onsite consumption, and then hours of operation. Also, if you do want to require a fee deposit for special services, that might be something we should discuss, although I think that could probably be left to staff discretion. I think that's probably enough of a, enough of a variable situation that allowing staff discretion on that one is probably pretty defensible.
All right. Thoughts on any of those options we have? And I think probably it's potentially possible that some things may follow from whether or not we allow consumption at events. So that might be one of the big questions to maybe address first, and then we can go from there. Councilmember Schroeder?
Just to clarify, the consumption, would we possibly break this into two between smoking and consumption of edibles and drinks? Because I'm thinking you might have, you know, where you have the drinks that have, you know, the product in it or the edibles where there, you know, there's not that smell versus if you're going to allow smoking of the product. So, you know, can you divide that into two separate events or can you, is the, I'm not sure, how would we address that?
Councilmember Schroeder, I don't see why you couldn't. You know, the state, the state law talks in terms of onsite consumption versus not onsite consumption. It doesn't split those two, but I think that certainly makes sense. And as I think I said, the legislation at this point appears to give the city pretty broad authority over regulating these events. So I think you could certainly say, well, we'll allow consumption of edibles and beverages, but not, no smoking.
Smoking or vaping, probably.
Right, yeah.
And then one more question on that. When you talk about the deposit, are we thinking like coming up with 100% of the cost as the deposit or would the deposit be part of it? So I guess that's, I was a little unsure what that meant by when we say special service fee deposit.
You know, this is one of the challenges of you not having an ordinance right now is a lot of cities will require a deposit, and depending on how big they expect the fee to be, the deposit will change. If it's going to be a huge fee, they'll take 50% of it, you know? So it really is up to you how you want to handle that, and we can draft it in however you'd like to handle it.
Okay, great. I just wanted to get clarified on those two pieces.
Right, Councilmember Ratten, I think you would...
Yeah, I would be in favor of a regulation that prevented smoking and vaping. I actually, if you can't smoke in public and you can't smoke indoors in Minnesota, I don't know where you would, but I would be willing to make that explicit here. Yeah, and I'm thinking about the events, should we be looking at some events ordinances that other cities have to try to clarify some of that rather than us taking a couple of things?
I think that's basically in here.
Or you feel like you already have done that?
Mayor Rowe has outed me. I did not invent this out of whole cloth.
You already said that.
There are many other samples. If you want a pile of samples, I can give you several. This one, I think, is a little bit Osseo and a little bit Oakdale. I'm trying to remember where my inspiration came from. But yeah, that's what this is. There are certainly more robust ordinances and there are certainly less robust ordinances out there.
When I say that, yes, I was referring to the debate about deposits and things like that, right? Most of this, I understand, I appreciate that you have looked at other things to help us round this out, but one piece that isn't in there is some of the things that you're referring to, say, hey, some cities do it this way for their deposits for any event. So look at that as a framing for any further discussion there without us sitting here with no reference point.
All right, Councilmember Strawn?
Do we have any further explanation of what constitutes an event? Because I was like, I mean, are we talking a cannabis convention or are we talking about any music concert where they decide to seek a cannabis event status so that it's permissible to utilize cannabis during that concert?
Councilmember Strawn, good question, and I think the answer is yes. I think it is all those things. It is anything they go to the state for to get a cannabis event organizer license. It's, it isn't entirely clear to me when the states, I mean, I think what it would do is it would allow the sale and in some cases, consumption of cannabis and cannabis products.
And are we indoor and outdoor? Yes, again?
Yes.
Okay, so the thinking, if you've ever been to a concert at First Avenue, there's a lot of consumption happening there without a special events license. You can smell it everywhere you go.
Councilmember Strawn, I don't mean to interrupt, but that would be, you know, so that's an example of a business that has a liquor license. So they're going to be able to serve low potency hemp beverages at their concerts, but because they have a liquor license, they would not be able to be a cannabis event. There's no consumption of alcohol at cannabis events.
I don't know that these people are sanctioned, but...
That's an enforcement question.
Yeah, exactly.
You're wandering. I had another question about the, I would be in support of the non-smoking events, especially if we cannot, we don't have any control or understanding of whether or not it would be indoor, outdoor, or what the purpose of the event would be. You know, I think, I appreciate the 30-day notice. I don't know if it has to be that long, but I think notice is helpful for our staff to be able to be prepared. And I don't know, I think that our hours of operation should follow our special events if they're outside and follow our policy if they're inside, I would think, or I think we definitely should have some hours of operation imposed. You know, I don't know, house party would be, fall under, you know, a party, 75 or more people, they have an event permit. So I think people would have to realize that they maybe would have to pull multiple permits or that would be the expectation if they were in that situation.
Councilmember Graff?
Well, the easy one is, yes, I would support the no smoking part of it. That makes sense. I do, I am concerned about the size. I mean, would they be able to, like, rent the Oval for an event like this? Of course, we would have control of that space as a city-owned. And I think we had somewhere in here that it was not allowed on city-owned property. Is that right?
Parks.
That's one of the choices for you to make?
Can be, yeah.
That's currently drafted.
Because I'm not as concerned about a small event, whereas like if you compared it to a wine tasting or something and there were 20 people, but if we had 800 people coming, it would certainly overwhelm our services, which, of course, would be another out for us because we could say that's just too much for our services. So I think there are some built-in things, but I have, those are the concerns that I So I think there are some built-in things, but I have, those are the concerns that I came up with mostly. Other than that, the buffer, I would not want that right next door to residential property.
I was trying to see with our regular events policy if we have something about, the only thing we have in there is about sound measured.
For hours of operation.
And hours of operation for amplified sound. It doesn't look like the hours.
We don't have anything.
Relate to just the event itself. It's just that for amplified sound, we do have limitations on the hours, which certainly would make sense. I was trying to find, there was, there was something about, I thought there was something about a distance.
No, I don't believe there is.
I think it was sound.
Oh, here we go, okay. Notice to property owners, on our regular event policy, applicant shall provide a 10-day notice to properties within 500 feet of the event that the event is going to happen. So that's presumably after they've been given the permission to do it. So that's the only thing we have in our, in our policy for just general events related to distance. It's not really a buffer, per se. I would tend to think that we would want to bring in anything related to amplified sound that's in our event policy into our ordinance related to these events and hours. And it says also, there's an hour, an overall limit, plus you can only do it for four hours at a time within that timeframe. So I think those are both good things to bring in there. I think I concur with the no smoking or vaping. What were some of the other ones?
30 days.
The 30 days, you know, I think that's reasonable. And I wouldn't be surprised. Yeah, I mean, I think that, that let's start with 30, and we can always shorten it if we need to. I think if it's, especially if it's a big event, it's not like they're going to plan it within 30 days of it happening anyway, or get the idea within 30 days of it happening anyway.
You'd be surprised how people show up at the last moment saying, we're going to do this event this coming weekend.
No doubt, nope, no doubt.
And that's a reason to say no.
Right. I'm, once again, I'm, I'm unsure on the buffers, but I'm trying to think of how we, you know, because we, these types of events, especially if we don't have smoking or vaping, we don't have buffers for our other types of events that have amplified sound. We just have sound time limits and sound level regulations. Do we need to do anything different with these types of events? I'm not 100% sure, especially if we don't have the smoking or vaping. I just don't know. So I need to hear more from councilmembers on that. Councilmember Eddin?
We go in reverse. I think you make a good point that if they're meeting their other things, they have to have security, they have to have controlled entrances. It's not like they're, like, throwing gummies over the backyard fence of someone's house, right? So, so I think that there may be some question as to whether we need buffers. Thinking about bringing in the event policy, should that just be part of 31804 under permit application that, that has to be completed? Or should we bring in the language and put it in here? My question is whether we dump it all in here or whether we put a reference to that under 31804.
Our policy could change over time, so it would track with that if we do change that policy.
If we just make reference to it, you mean?
Right. But I would defer to the city attorney what's stronger, if we want to make sure we can enforce some things.
I would, let me, let me think about that. There, I generally struggle with the enforceability of a policy that stands beside an ordinance, if that makes sense. It's, you know, an ordinance is an ordinance. It's adopted by the council, it expresses the will of the council. And a policy is, is a, an administrative decision, and it can never conflict with an ordinance. It can supplement them sometimes, but it shouldn't, it shouldn't stand on its own, if that makes sense.
So I suppose one way to do it, if we were to make reference to it, would be to say, meet all these requirements and appropriate, and in addition, appropriate requirements under our event policy, our general event policy, maybe.
Or, or what I would do is, I would use the, and thinking and talking at the same time can be dangerous, but what I would.
You do it all the time.
What I would recommend maybe is, is to put a provision into the ordinance that allows, allows imposition of conditions, you know, at the discretion of staff. And then obviously, you're going to be held to a reasonableness standard that you can't just impose a random condition that doesn't have anything to do with the event. But then staff could use the events policy to guide when and what conditions they would impose.
And there would be the ability to be consistent with what we've done with other events.
Yeah, and then your policy actually really supplements your ordinance and ensures consistency is applied when the staff is exercising discretion.
Okay. And certainly, if there are certain things that are in our general policy that makes sense to put into the ordinance specifically, I don't think any of us have a problem with that. And if, in the best judgment of our attorney, that's the recommendation. By gum, we're probably going to do it. Probably. Councilmember Strawn.
I was just curious, I mean, there is reference to treatment facilities, schools, park features. We have indicated already prohibits use of city-owned property for events. Obviously, the school properties are not in our jurisdiction to make. I would assume we aren't going to make any type of sweeping information about their services or their ability to utilize the same event policy and the same cannabis ordinance. But I don't, will that, we aren't, if we don't specifically note it, is there, is there harm in doing and not making a specific notation of all these other items?
No, as I said, the reason that those definitions are here is so that we can have the conversation about whether or not you want to require a buffer from those uses. And so if, if you're not going to require the buffer, I would just pull those definitions out because they're unnecessary.
But that raises the question, though. We, we could not prohibit a temporary cannabis event on a school district property by city ordinance, could we?
But does the state law prohibit?
I don't know. I'm just to kind of think this through.
Mayor, I think you could. There'd be arguments that you've overstepped. But in the same way that you can tell me that I can't hold, I can't hold a concert in my backyard, you know, it's not property that you own, but it, it is within your jurisdiction to regulate how property is used. So it may be overstepping, but I think you might be able to do it.
And I'm not saying we necessarily want to do that, but I was just trying to understand sort of what, what we're bumping up against here. Because I could imagine theoretically, a school district, a fictional school district can decide that an excellent fundraiser for their school foundation.
Oh, my gosh.
Might be a temporary cannabis event at one of their facilities. I don't.
PTA fundraiser.
Right.
I bet it's a charter.
Does this get, though, to the next section when we talk about zoning? And just, you wouldn't allow it on that way on school property, on educational property?
Have we said anything about cannabis events in our zoning language? No.
I would encourage you not to use your zoning code to regulate the location of cannabis events.
Okay.
And we don't use that to regulate location of parties, for instance, on private property. That's police powers.
What you'd be doing is you'd be, you'd be calling a zoning event a use. And then you, you raise the issue of whether, once you've allowed it in a location, you have to allow it there forever. Whereas if you just regulate it under your traditional police powers, you're not going to have that problem.
They would have to get an interim use permit to have every temporary event. Yes, that sounds awesome. Our planning department, people are bailing on it. They're getting out their pitchforks. All right. So on the events, we've got some things that need to be looked at and brought back as well, so.
So can I, can I give you my list to make sure I didn't forget?
Sure, sure, sure.
So I understand that you don't want smoking or vaping. We'll work on hours of operation using the, the current policy, and then your noise policy as well. We'll add regulations about amplified sound, and we'll look at including some language to impose license conditions, which would then probably come out of your policy. Those are my notes on the events ordinance. Have I forgotten anything?
The 30-day piece?
I think we're pretty, pretty okay with the 30 days.
30 days was in there.
Yeah.
Did you want some sample language about, about fees?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely.
The other note I had, and I don't know if it was talked about during buffers when I was looking something up, but there was one point brought up about prohibiting these events next to residential property. Somebody brought it up. I don't know if it wanted to be incorporated in, if it wanted to apply only to an outdoor event versus an indoor event, but that's the other note I had you didn't mention.
Well, I think our, our policy on events does not have a limitation on.
It does not.
Being next to, so.
And I did send the policy to Rachel.
It, it talks about notifying.
Right, you have to notify people with.
Oh, that was the other thing. Do you want to provide a 10-day prior to notification like is currently in our events policy?
Well, that's, once again, do we leave it and refer to the events policy and make that a requirement there? Or do we bring it in from that policy into this ordinance?
Councilmember Row, I may, or Mayor Row, I may have misunderstood. My understanding was that the notification requirement applied to amplified sound. Or does it require all?
It's for any event.
For any special event.
Any special event that we're permitting at the city.
Over a certain number of people.
No, there's no, no limit.
Well, yeah, I think that if it qualifies as a special event and it's being permitted by the city, then there has to be that notification of people. And the, one of the key things with that notification was so that the people in the neighborhood understand who to contact if there's an issue or concern. And what, you know, both, whether it's at the city, but also I think the organizer has to have a contact. It's from the organ.
I thought that if you're having a dinner party for 20, you don't have to do something.
If you have a reception in your backyard for 50 or more people.
Isn't it 75?
We don't have, I don't believe we have any, any number there. If it's, if it's outside, if you're holding it inside.
It's just the sound.
It's the sound.
Okay.
Well, yes, but we issue special events permits for, for large gatherings that may not have amplified sound. It's also about the impact to the neighborhood if you have all the cars there and the, and the people.
So how do you define a large gathering?
Well, A, they come to us if it's like a wedding, or they're going to have a retirement celebration, they can put up a tent, they need to get a tent permit. It, it, it's imperfect. You know, it's really, we reach out if somebody comes to us, or they come to us and ask if there's any questions. But whether or not there's other things that happen that are non-amplified, probably. I think that's just the reality of it.
Yeah, I was just looking at the policy. It's, it's not exactly clear as to what qualifies as a special event.
Because I remember the discussion on it, and we had talked about a number of people, but I guess that got left out of it.
This is more related to special events. Do our special events have, have language about having to adhere to the sign requirements?
No, don't talk about signs at all.
Okay, I've just noticed that quite a few temporary or special events in the city have.
All things in the city must comply with our sign code, which was developed by very skillful and knowledgeable hands when I was on the planning commission many, many years ago.
Really, a while back.
Yes.
We can improve that sense.
And not to belabor the point, Mr. Mayor, but I think I maybe bespoke, so under our policies, these are exempt. Any graduation parties, weddings, or funeral gatherings located on property that is used as a principal place of residence of the host of the event, and the event does not have amplified sound or music. So we don't, we do not require, if they don't have amplified, it's when they do have amplified music for those type of events.
For those types of events, right.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for finding that.
I misspoke.
All right. Have we covered the event ordinance then? And given, given Ms. Tierney a healthy assignment to work on?
Give my dear.
All right. Zoning!
Believe it or not, this is the shorter of the ordinances of the three that we just talked about. So there's really not a ton of questions we have, just because we did have an introductory conversation with the city council in September, I think early September, following a planning commission meeting that same month. The ordinance that's in your packet is the abbreviated version, so we didn't put, you know, every single paragraph from every single affected section in this ordinance. But just really briefly, we define all of the types of cannabis businesses that the state will license in the definition section. We have added the types of cannabis businesses in the mixed-use district table of allowed uses, so that's section 1,005.3. You'll note that obviously there are not permitted uses, permitted and conditionally permitted. You'll also see reference to a lot of footnotes, and I want to note that these are requirements that are already in place for our limited production and processing and warehousing uses. So they would apply to the similar cannabis uses, but because we wanted to be very clear that these apply, we added the footnote, and then we added it in a later section, too. So I just want to note that. We've also edited the table of allowed uses under section 1,006.03 for our employment in industrial districts. One note that did come up at the planning commission meeting that I just want to highlight is you'll see under cannabis lounge in the industrial district, that's listed as not permitted. And that's simply because retail isn't permitted in our industrial district. So those micro businesses that would be able to do retail are not going to be able to do it in the industrial district, and I want to point that out. We also added a couple of conditions into the conditional use section of the code. This is in section 1,009.02, paragraph D. So the businesses that are conditionally permitted, we added an odor mitigation requirement. And then we also added it, added the trucking limitation. Again, this isn't made up, this is something that's already in place, and we wanted to, again, be very clear this applies to those cannabis-related businesses. And then lastly, that last section, 1,011.12, paragraph E, those all relate to the footnotes. We just wanted to spell it out more clearly. This was presented to the planning commission this month. While they had a lot of conversation about cannabis in general, they were pretty satisfied with the draft ordinance, did not make any recommendations to the draft that's before you this evening. And then I want to clarify, last time we were before you, we brought you one big table with all of the businesses and how they would be allowed in the various districts. In this particular ordinance, we had to break it up to match the zoning districts, but what's in there reflects what you saw at your conversation on September 9th. So that's really all we wanted to present on the zoning side of things. The city planners here to help me address any questions related to the footnotes and how some of those things are already applied. But the biggest question is, do you have any changes on the not permitted, permitted versus conditional? And then are you satisfied with how we drafted the odor mitigation requirement for the conditionally permitted uses, which are the combination businesses, the cultivator businesses, and the transportation uses?
All right, thank you for presenting that. Questions or feedback from the council? Councilmember Eddin?
I'm supportive of what you've done. Thank you.
I'll echo that. Other thoughts?
I would echo that, too.
I agree. It's clear to me.
Not only is it the shortest ordinance, it's probably also the shortest conversation.
But the most impactful.
All right.
We created a slide for some of the questions that came up. I think we've touched on all of them except that third one, which is how will OCM enforce the law? We talked about this very briefly in the equity and inclusion toolkit that we provided in your ordinance, because we already have had some experience in getting complaints and not being able to do much about them other than referring them to the state. So that's all I want to say about the enforcement, but of course, the city attorney probably has a much better answer for it, or if you have a specific question, we can try to address it.
I don't know, that's putting a lot of pressure on her, right, to have a specific answer to it, because she'd be speaking on behalf of the OC.
Yep.
Way to shut her down.
Yeah, geez.
Well, I was just giving her an out.
Mayor Row, councilmembers, it is, it simply, I think the OCM just isn't, isn't up and running enough to understand what their, what their enforcement mechanisms are going to look like. What I will say is there is a, a section of the ordinance related to criminal penalties, and for the most part, and maybe that's underselling it, it may be simply exclusively, those criminal penalties apply to businesses that are, 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 the operation of cannabis businesses. When we're talking about cannabis for personal use or something like that, I'm not seeing criminal penalties in that ordinance or elsewhere in state law.
Councilmember Strawn? Councilmember Strawn?
Wanted to, uh, bring up question number two. For events, can access be controlled to ensure age compliance? As the cannabis law is written to be for 21-plus, is that implied? Or do we have to specifically outline that these cannabis events are 21-plus?
Councilmember Strawn, great question. Those, um, the state law requires that the cannabis event is 21 and over only, and that they have a specific plan to regulate, um, age. How are they going to control who gets in? And then there's also a requirement on top of controlling who gets into the event itself, that anyone that sells cannabis has to also verify the age of the individual that they're selling to.
Okay. So doesn't seem like there needs to be an added piece in there to discuss that? Or is that just a, just to be sure?
I, I think that if, in this example, I think that the state requirement is clear enough. And then within the, the, your regulations of cannabis, of cannabis events, temporary cannabis events, you also require compliance with the state statute. And I think that's enough for, to cover those, to cover that base.
I think that's pretty parallel to our liquor ordinance too, if I remember right. We don't restate the age requirement in state law, but we enforce it. And we say the consequences for not enforcing it as a business or a licensee. All right. I think that gets us to the end of our cannabis discussion this evening. I thank everybody again for their involvement, including the, the planning commission and all the staff and attorney work. And we've got a few things that will be no doubt coming back to us for further discussions. So stay tuned to that. And I believe that gives us an opportunity to continue with our meeting, although I'll check. We're 10 minutes to our break time. Does the council want to take a short break? Or do you want to proceed?
Let's just keep going.
All right, you had your chance. All right. With that then, uh, the next item on our agenda this evening is item 7C, which is bringing back a topic before the council, just to give us an update and perhaps seek council feedback on, uh, the shopping cart issue at Snelling and Bee in Roseville. And I'll turn it over back over to Ms. Gunlock to bring this item before us.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My understanding is a council member asked for this to be put on the agenda. Staff wasn't quite sure what wanted to be talked about, so we just put some background information together in your packet. I'm not going to present any of it. Uh, Dave England, our building official is here, who, uh, his staff tries to do whatever we can related to the carts. So between him and I, we'll just address any questions you might have.
All right, and can you just give kind of a brief outline of what our process is? Just for the members of the public who may not be up to speed on that?
Why don't you give a brief outline of how you handle complaints?
Uh, when we receive complaints, uh, related to carts, especially at that location, we verify that they are there, and then we contact each store individually, um, whose carts are observed there. We give them 24 hours to remove them. If they're not removed, then we'll contact our vendor to remove them. And then we charge them an administrative fee of $100 per cart. And then whatever the vendor charges us to, uh, remove and dispose of those carts.
And to clarify, I think the first time we did dispose of the carts, that's really not sustainable. So we, the second time, the carts were brought back to the store, but they were still charged for that effort. Um, just so they weren't being rewarded for not picking up their carts, but.
So it was $100 per cart plus the cost to gather them up and bring them back to the store?
That's right.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Uh, Councilmember Hatton?
Are stores, do stores seem to have a system of proactively gathering their carts at some sort of timeframe? Or is this only when someone gets annoyed? It seems that drive-by the intersection that we don't end up with 100. So I'm, I'm curious what you know about what these stores are doing. Looking at the numbers, it's really around Target and Cub and maybe, you know, smaller numbers of other businesses depending on kind of cycles. But what do we know?
I know Cub picks up their carts Monday, Wednesday, and Friday.
Okay.
Target is, I don't know exactly what date, but it's for sure on Wednesdays that they gather theirs. The other carts that are on site from Goodwill to Home Goods to Burlington, it's much more infrequent. Those are the ones that tend to stay there the longest. But that's my opinion, because they don't have the staff that the other stores have to dedicate just to carts. And a lot of it is that they just don't see them, because they're at their store, their location, they're not viewing them there. But they have been the last couple of years very responsive to our requests.
Councilmember Strawn?
Thank you. Well, I've brought this up a couple of times, because I have one person in particular who reaches out to me quite regularly, specifically about this. As you may know, uh, Home Goods is no longer in Harmer. And it did look like they had a fairly large representation of the carts, given the size and amount of sales compared to the others. I think what this, um, something that else came to mind is in, uh, door knocking for campaigning, the amount of people who live in the apartments who have shopping carts in their homes. One gentleman had about six. I don't know how he had room to sleep, actually, because they were all different brands, they were all different stores. And I was like, oh, what do you need those for? And he's like, ah, you never know when I need them. I was like, ooh, okay. So, and they took the place of like a couch. And, you know, he may be individual, but I have seen other folks. Just the other night, I saw some folks with like a caravan of them, um, going down the street. And I live right by Harmer, so, you know, I'm going to see them more than most folks. But I do note that Aldi at, um, on Larberter does have, uh, wheel locks. Granted, they had a more recent build than other locations. I don't see that that Cub has, um, as many, because they don't have the bussing issues and stuff. They don't see as many carts in that area. But I, you know, I, I know that there are changing technologies. Some of the technologies have relied on like the invisible fencing, which is pretty much impossible for an existing business, unless you're going to dig up the outside of your, um, parking lot. But that there are the possibility of having geo-fencing. Of course, people figure a way to circumvent it if they want to, lift it up, carry it around, whatever. There are wheel locks. I just wondered if there was a possibility of us considering, um, requiring that on new builds or new businesses moving forward. Not retro, not going back to people who already have them. But if another business went in to say you have to have that, I know that, um, I, if you do a quick search, it looks like half the world's talking about it right now. All of California is, you know, like there's five or six of them that have had it on their city council agenda in the last five days. So it's very common. But I think what a lot of other folks and other people are seeing is there are no carts left in the stores for them to utilize. And then some other cities have required that they use the quarter method like Aldi does. So it's interesting that Aldi utilizes the wheel locks as well as the quarter method. And I am one who never pays a quarter, except for the one day when it was pouring rain and I found out about the wheel locks. But, um, I always only take what I can carry. But that, you know, that's also seen as a theft present, prevention method too, is that people, if they don't have the cart or they can't get it off the property. I just want to know if, obviously, there's a lot of issues at play. I know some of the people have mentioned, you know, it's convenient for, uh, people who are getting on the bus. But I, I, I think, I know in many stores in Minneapolis, there are signs that say that carts belong to Target. Or, um, I did see some of the ordinances require that the carts do say, this cart, warning, this cart belongs to this store. And if you take it off property, you are stealing or whatever. But I just think we've, there's a nuisance and it's everywhere. It's not just here. It's, um, but trying to look at various possibilities of ways. I don't think, I, I love that it's convenient for people who maybe don't have a car or do use public transportation, but I don't know that Target owes people who don't have a car, um, a free transportation vehicle. And maybe that's something that we could reach out to area nonprofits who could maybe help people get a grant for a cart or something, if that's something they need to be able to utilize the bus. But, um, I, I would just like to find a way that these expensive, fully-plastic, non-recyclable materials aren't just wedged into the woods, um, over by Rosebrook Park. There was quite a few over there for a while, and that's kind of a distance from those businesses. And so trying to find a way that we can, um, have that be still a service that's available at the stores, but that they're not creating a public nuisance. Sometimes they're in the right of way, sometimes they're in the middle of the street. They certainly don't look great, and it makes the, the neighborhood look like we just don't care, even though, um, obviously Wednesday's is a long way from Sunday night, when there might be 20 of them there and they're stacked up, all different brands, you know, all different ones. But sometimes they are in the middle of the street, or you can't even get near the bus shelter, which is already kind of compromised there because of the access. So just trying to think of other ways and maybe considering if we could consider putting an ordinance in that new builds would require some type of mitigation. Not saying everybody who's out there, but maybe just trying to think forward as we go on. We don't have a lot of opportunities, but when there's a new place, new dicks or whatever, just to say, hey, you know, everybody from here on in has to, I, because I don't think that's unique to us, and I don't think it's something that's not being asked elsewhere. Because Minneapolis, it's pretty common in a lot of their facilities that they have, especially newer. All of it. I just blurted it at you, sorry.
Other thoughts from councilmembers related to the shopping cart issue? I was somewhat facetiously thinking that maybe we could, uh, combine two potential solutions together and, and figure out a way for, uh, folks that, that are, are on the street corner doing other activities to have some kind of piecework payment to, to retrieve carts since they're outside enjoying the weather anyway in that area. But I'm not sure there's a, a real good mechanism for that, but, uh, and, or an incentive built into that. But, uh, but I, you know, it sounds like at least two of the larger retailers there are, at least one of them more than once a week and the other one once a week, addressing the issue. I mean, you know, I don't know. I'm, I'm not sure that it's so widespread of an issue in the city that we need to have an ordinance affecting all the businesses in the city, but I'm not sure of the answer. So that, it's just a, a thought that's out there. Maybe we just need to work more with our retailers, especially in that area, to figure something out. Maybe we work with the management company to see if that's something they can, you know, work with their tenants on and, or even have some kind of, you know, obviously we can't force lease requirements necessarily, but, um, I don't know. Other thoughts or staff thoughts? Councilmember Hatton?
Um, one of the things you brought up, I think that we have to remember that we, there's no perfect system here. But the A-line went in to allow people to have access to things and like Target or Cub and get food. And there's a significant percentage that we saw in the staff report of people who aren't doing that. And so I think we want to make sure we are not creating a problem there. I think it's big enough, it's hard to say, hey, it's not a, it's a thing we can just get a grant or get people to stop doing it. I think it's just too much of a big thing. I would be more in favor of working with these companies to make sure that maybe they have a more regular schedule or a more frequent schedule. It looks like the other place besides Target and Cub that have seemingly a lot of carts is Home Goods. Not Home Goods, I'm sorry, Michaels. Which is a little confusing, but, you know, um, so that we maybe are going to them and saying, hey, you know, this continues to be an issue. Council's talking about more regulation, we prefer you just step up your schedule, what can you do for us? I don't know.
I, I think, uh, on a somewhat regular basis, our staff does go out and remind the stores that they need to do this. We'll, we'll continue to do that. I would also note, this is the only location where there's a regular occurrence of cart collection. I don't dispute that there might be a random cart here or there throughout the city. But is it a problem regularly? Not that we see or ever receive complaints on it, it is solely this, this corner.
My neighbor finds it to be a very big problem.
Yeah, I think we've both talked to him multiple times.
I have multiple neighbors, some that never tell you anything. So, and I think it's because of the proximity to Harmer. But I also think, I, I guess, I, I just think we could be more creative in how we look at it and not just say, well, we'll just kind of, when you drive by it every morning and you see this large stack, it just looks like nobody gives a rip about the neighborhood. And it has a appearance that, you know, it doesn't, it's not well-attended. And so I just think if we had a way somehow, even if it was to look forward and say, okay, if another Aldi, if we got our fourth Aldi in, in Roseville, our third, but close, you know, if they would, maybe they would do it automatically. But maybe if we, you know, had some type of suggestion or program or some kind of recommendation to how people could do that. Or, you know, we've talked so many times about how poor, you know, we, we have all this porous, non-porous space. And, I mean, how could we find a way to just build what we have and look forward so we are thinking ahead? Because if, if that Harmer was filled with shops that all had carts, that corner would be impossible. I mean, like, there's hardly anything in Harmer, so that saves them.
I mean, one of the answers could be to actually have a cart corral near each of the bus stops, you know? And it's at least, you know, a certain percentage of the population uses those when they're presented to them at stores, not everybody. But that might help a little bit, at least with the organization of it.
I think on the Harmer side.
It could also be looked at as an encouragement to use a cart and take it, hey, because they've got this neat place to put it. But if it's happening anyway, at least it's, you know, I don't know.
Also, that would keep them from drifting out into the traffic lane, which doesn't happen often. But if it does, it's a pretty dangerous thing, you know, because that is such a busy corner.
Well, and if it could keep them on the one side, because that's just kind of like a, you know, it's, it's just a strip of land between two roads there where the bus shelter is, and there's not even a good, um, like, entry point to it. So it's really, I don't know, it's a feat to get it in there.
So we.
We can have some conversations maybe with the management there. I, I didn't mean to jump on your, what you were going to say.
I didn't mean to interrupt you either, Mayor. I just wanted to note, um, we have reached out to Metro Transit to see if they would put a cart corral at the platform. They're looking into it. I was told there's only one other bus station in the metro that has one. And they said, well, it doesn't really work. But we looked at that one and it's not all comparable to our situation locally. And after looking at the pictures and seeing the situation, she agreed to look at it and get back to me. She hasn't gotten back to me yet, but we are investigating that, just because state and county roads, the state doesn't have any authority. We tried to work that into the pedestrian study with some future, uh, intersection improvement designs. And that didn't go anywhere, because Min Dot wouldn't entertain it. So I just went right to Metro Transit. And so we're, we're attempting that and we'll.
Do you think we could, uh, we could pull our Met Council representative into it as well?
Potentially, I, I would, let's see if we can get somewhere with the staff first, because they are talking to me about it. So I just sent a follow-up question today for an update. I haven't gotten anything back yet, but.
Thank you.
We are looking into that.
All right. More on this to come, no doubt, but, uh, looking forward to hearing what that response is and what else we might be able to do. All right. That then brings us to, uh, consideration of city council minutes. We have, um, a couple of sets of minutes from strategic planning sessions, as well as our minutes from the October 7th regular council meeting. Are there any changes or corrections that need to be made to any of those minutes prior to approval? Or is there a motion related to approval of those minutes?
I move approval of those.
Second. I, can we split them, please?
Oh, we need to do an abstention on one or more?
Okay.
Which one should we split out?
Uh, the, the 11th.
The 11th, okay. So do we have a motion on then the September 25th special meeting and the October 7th council meeting? Is that what?
That will, that's my motion, yes, thank you.
Moved by Graff, seconded by Schroder to approve the September 25th and October 7th minutes as presented? Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, those minutes are approved. Then we have the minutes of our October 11th strategic planning session special meeting. Is there a motion on those?
It's removed.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Hatton, seconded by Councilmember Schroder. That shrug was just because I wrote the wrong letter for your initials. No other men, no other editorial comment there meant. Discussion on the motion, this is once again to approve the October 11th special meeting minutes. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Aye opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
One abstention from Councilmember Strong. I'm barely keeping it together here. All right. Those pass four to zero then with that one abstention. That brings us to our consent agenda. Mr. Trejan, if you'd give us a brief outline of those?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fairly short consent agenda. Item 10A approves payments the amount of $2,296,137.18. Item 10B approves purchase of five police department marked vehicles as part of our vehicle replacement program. This request is part of the 2025 CIP, but due to the long lead time to receive the vehicle, staff is requesting approval of the purchase now. Item 10C receives a quarterly grant applications update. To date, the city has received $1.3 million in awarded grant funds. Item 10D accepts grant funding in the amount of $250,000 to fund the personnel costs for a temporary staff position to lead the police department's accreditation process. This process is expected to take up to two years. Once the position's work is done, the accreditation manager position will be eliminated. Then finally, agenda item 10E accepts $100,000 in grant funding from the state of Minnesota to provide financial support for the training and education of candidates looking to transition from another career to become a police officer. This amount will fund two candidates' tuition and salary, and that is the consent agenda.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trejan. Is there a motion on the consent items as presented?
It's removed.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Graff, seconded by Councilmember Strong. Excuse me, discussion on that motion?
Thank you for going on and getting these grants. Pretty amazing, and they really provide us great value.
This department's doing a great job. All right. We have the motion before us. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes unanimously. Those items are approved. That then brings us to future agenda review. Mr. Trejan?
Yeah, and I would note, this is slightly different from what's in your packet. We had some shifting here. So just a reminder, this Thursday, we have our strategic planning second session from 3:00 to 7:00 over in the fireside oval room. On the 4th, we have several items at a regular council meeting, donations from the, to the Rosa Parks and Recreation Department, and also recognition of their recent accreditation and reaccreditation. We'll also be discussing the 25 fee schedule and the utility rates, and also be looking at the city council and EDA meeting calendar. On November 12th, I think in the packet it said November 8th, which is that Friday, we learned today from the county, we'll be getting the final report sometime on the 8th, which is a Friday. So in order to make sure, we have until the 13th. November 11th is Veterans Day, so November 12th. I put 12 noon down, but it really can be any time. So I think the council should maybe discuss when would be a good time for at least the quorum to certify those canvassing of the general election results. The following day, we would have our third session for strategic planning. We're still looking for a location. We do have one park building reserved. I talked to the facilitator today, and we're going to check, make sure that's the appropriate location, so stay tuned for that. On the 25th, you may have noticed in the thing in the packet, we thought we were going to try to have a special EDA meeting on the 4th. The housing study information just won't be ready by that point, so we do want to hold that on the 25th. This is the housing study, just to check in a little bit, and we'll look to approve that calendar. And then at the regular meeting, we'll have the public hearing for the city and EDA levy. We'll look at the cannabis ordinances again, begin the discussion legislative priorities, and then also receive an update on the Parks and Recreation Natural Resources Management Plan. And then we have a slew of business license approvals for the start of the year, so there's a liquor licenses and pretty routine stuff. So we'll be having it November 25th and the December 2nd meeting as well. And that is the future agenda.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Trejan. Questions on the future agenda or items councilmembers wish to add? Councilmember Schroder?
I am not available on the 12th at noon. I just want to make sure there's going to be enough of you going to be there to certify.
Are you available at 6:00 PM that night?
At whatever time you, you think is the...
Councilmember Schroder, are you available that evening?
Let me just let up again.
Yeah, it'll be a five-minute meeting.
Yeah, I could, yeah, definitely.
I could do a 6:00 PM.
Yeah, I have a, I have something at 7:00, so if it's as quick, I could do it.
It's very quick.
Yeah, I know I do.
It may be five minutes.
Yeah, so.
Unless the mayor decides.
That would work better.
Never happens at those meetings. Does that work for other councilmembers to do the 6:00 PM timeframe on the 12th?
It's fine.
All right. That sounds like when we'll do that special meeting then. Any other, any other items related to future agendas or reports and announcements, communications? I know everybody's entering an appointment into their calendar now.
Yeah.
Maybe I'll take advantage of that, and I'll say, the only thing left on our agenda is...
Is a mayoral race?
A journal, no, adjournment, I should say.
It's removed.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Graff, in between typing, seconded by Councilmember Schroder, in between typing. All those in favor of the motion to adjourn, since there's no discussion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes unanimously, and we are adjourned at 8:14 PM. Thank you, everyone.
I wanted to get that.